Happy Tuesday to you. It is Tuesday, August the first. And you believe it's already August already. And we're in the heart of Old Town Conyers here at the Rockdale Auditorium, 901 Main Street. And we're calling our, we're calling our, we're at nine oh-
We're at 903.
903. Thank you, Commissioner. We're at 903 Main Street at the Rockdale County Auditorium, and we're calling our meeting to order. We will start with our presentation from the Finance Department, the tag-team duo of our brand-new CFO and our financial advisor, Mr. David Corbin.
Hello, Chairman and Commissioners.
And if you would just pull it to you there just a little bit. Reposition it just like you would if you was at church there.
Okay.
Just pull it to your mouth. That way you can, they can pick it up. Because the PR team, they're on it this afternoon, so they got the volume right, but you still gotta pull it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, awesome. Good afternoon again, Chair and Commissioners. We'd like to start today with a brief video that explains the millage, the proposed millage rate.
What is the millage rate? Well, simply put, it's what you owe in taxes on your property. Each mill represents $1 of $1,000 in property value. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a 2023 millage rate of 18.69 mills, which will require an increase in property taxes of 17.58%. Now, although the county would be keeping the same millage rate from last year, the state still views it as a tax increase because property values are going up, which is good news for residents who plan on selling their property in the near future since their property value and home equity have increased. To help lower your tax bill, the homestead exemption and the homestead option sales tax, also known as host, can be applied to that amount. So for instance, if your house is valued at $100,000, you would owe approximately $747.60 in taxes. But with both the homestead and host exemptions applied, you only owe $116.81. Similarly, if your house is valued at $300,000, you would owe approximately $2,242.80. After applying both the homestead and host exemptions, you would only owe $490.61. That's a lot of savings. So where do these tax dollars go? Well, for every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives approximately 18% or 18 cents. Let me repeat that. The county receives approximately 18% or 18 cents. The remaining 82% or 82 cents goes toward the school system, which sets its own millage rate. The 18 cents from each dollar funds public safety, general government, court services, recreation, and transportation. We want to hear from you about what you have to say about this. So be sure to come out to one of the three public millage rate hearings. The first one will be held on Tuesday, August 1st, at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. The second one will take place on Tuesday, August 1st, at 6:00 p.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. And the last public hearing will take place on Tuesday, August 8th, at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. Following the public hearings, the Board of Commissioners will hold a called meeting to set the millage rate on Tuesday, August 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. We certainly hope this helps you understand the millage rate better, and we're looking forward to seeing you at the upcoming public hearings.
All right. Well, thank you to our Public Relations team for wonderful production of that informational and educational video, and I'll yield back to our Finance Team.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna go over a brief presentation which states a lot that was in the video. This is the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' presentation of the proposed millage rate for the 2023 tax year. This is the budget allocation for fiscal year 2023. General Fund Budget Summary. As you can see, public safety takes up almost half of this, at 48%, followed by general government at 29%, court services at 11%, recreation and parks at 8%, and Rockdale DOT at 4%. As we look closely, this is the Tax Digest history, starting with history from 2012 through current year. As you can see, the Digest has grown, and if you've looked at anything in this market, you know that as well. This is the millage rate history, again, starting in 2012 through 2023. One thing that we want to make sure that you notice is the proposed millage rate for 2023 is 18.69, which is the same as the millage rate was in 2022. The average property tax allocation is on this slide, broken down, and you can see that approximately 82% goes towards school MNO and 18% county MNO. Now, this is based on a 2023 homesteaded property, which also has the host exemption. Here's a couple of examples from property tax calculation. These are sample property tax calculations at the 18.69 mills. One is an example of a home valued at $100,000. The estimated property tax with the exemption and the 75% host is $116.81. The property tax for that same $100,000-valued home without the exemptions would be $747.60. So you can see the substantial savings. We'll also look here at a 300,000-assessed home. With the estimated property tax with the exemption and the 75% host, the property taxes would be $490.61 approximately. Without those exemptions, it's a massive jump at $2,242.80. The proposed millage rate again is 18.69. As we discussed, that is also the same millage rate we had in 2022. The revenues that will come in are $64,696,542, representing property taxes, and $36,765,520 of non-property taxes. This will give you revenues for 2023 in the amount of $101,462,062. We had our first public hearing this morning at 10:00. We're at our current public hearing today at 6:00. The next public hearing will be at 10:00 a.m. on August 8th, and a called meeting for the setting of the millage rate will be August 22nd, 2023. All of those meetings will be held here at the Rockdale Auditorium. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Madam CFO. I'm going to yield at this moment to Commissioner Washington and then to Commissioner Williams if they have any comments. Commissioner Washington.
Sure. First of all, thank you all for the great presentation and the video from Public Relations. But could you all take that back to the slide that showed the millage rate over the years, please? I just wanted to see. Yeah, that one. So in 2020, it was 18.02, then we went to, we did the two complete rollbacks in 2020 and '21. But before 2020 with the two rollbacks, we were at 20.19. Is that, I'm seeing this correct? And that was even lower than it was in 2013 and '14 at 20.7. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams, any comments?
Yes, I'd just like to have some clarification on the revenue sources. Talked about 64.69 million in property tax, and then the non-property taxes. Could you clarify what non-property taxes are?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that for me one more time, Commissioner?
What should, sir?
I, just can you clarify where, where the taxes come that is non-property taxes?
So the non-property taxes consist of primarily two things. Sales taxes, that's the host and other sales taxes, and charges and services for, you know, charges and fees for services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. And a lot of these questions are coming because the three of us, even from this morning, have received some inquiries from citizens who don't always understand some of the terminology. So when it said "non-property tax," that we needed to explain exactly what that meant. And a lot of folks don't know, other than taxes from people's properties, homes and businesses, there's sales tax that we rely on to help operate the community as well.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
And at this point, we will move into public comment. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So tonight is a public hearing. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes per speaker, and it's relative to the millage rate.
Very good. I have one card so far. Are there any others? I know a few people came in from the beginning. We want to make sure we afford everyone the opportunity to be able to voice their thoughts concerning the millage rate this afternoon. All right, the first speaker will be Mr. Tommy Plummer. Come on up, Mr. Plummer.
Good afternoon.
I was actually on vacation in Los Angeles when I heard that someone called me and told me that, you know, taxes is getting a little bit out of hand. And I explained to him that I'm on vacation. I just can't. But then I thought about it. My taxes are going up too. So it was kind of like a two-fold thing. And I guess my concern is, you know, then I'm getting all these calls about taxes going up. So it kind of scared me a little bit to come out this evening and see from my, my Commissioners, can you explain to me the difference between the school board taxes and the residential taxes and how the two can, you know, how do we measure those out? And then, you know, like quite naturally, what am I gonna get for my tax dollars? I understand the police and fire is very important in this community, and I'm, I'm gonna take my hats off to them. And I, and we do have a good fire department. We do have a good sheriff department. But my question is, are the taxes going a little bit too high? I guess I could, you know, and a direct question, and I'm gonna ask you guys. Is these taxes a little bit too high? And I know you can't answer me back, but please, if you could kind of break it down to me so I could break it down to the phone calls I'm getting.
Okay.
If that could, if that could happen. Thank you very much for that, and I'll resume my vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Give me just one second, Commissioner. Public Relations, if you would be so kind, because I do want to entertain the questions and concerns that Mr. Plummer brought forward. Please bring the video back up.
Well, simply put, it's what you owe in taxes on your property. Each mill represents $1 of $1,000 in property value. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a 2023 millage rate of 18.69 mills, which will require an increase in property taxes of 17.58%. Now, although the county would be keeping the same millage rate from last year, the state still views it as a tax increase because property values are going up, which is good news for residents who plan on selling their property in the near future since their property value and home equity have increased. To help lower your tax bill, the homestead exemption and the homestead option sales tax, also known as host, can be applied to that amount. So for instance, if your house is valued at $100,000, you would owe approximately $747.60 in taxes. But with both the homestead and host exemptions applied, you only owe $116.81. Similarly, if your house is valued at $300,000, you would owe approximately $2,242.80. After applying both the homestead and host exemptions, you would only owe $490.61. That's a lot of savings. So where do these tax dollars go? Well, for every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives approximately 18% or 18 cents. Let me repeat that. The county receives approximately 18% or 18 cents. The remaining 82% or 82 cents goes toward the school system, which sets its own millage rate. The 18 cents from each dollar funds public safety, general government, court services, recreation, and transportation. We want to hear from you about what you have to say about this. So be sure to come out to one of the three public millage rate hearings. The first one will be held on Tuesday, August 1st, at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. The second one will take place on Tuesday, August 1st, at 6:00 p.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. And the last public hearing will take place on Tuesday, August 8th, at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. Following the public hearings, the Board of Commissioners will hold a called meeting to set the millage rate on Tuesday, August 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. in the auditorium located at 903 Main Street. We certainly hope this helps you understand the millage rate better, and we're looking forward to seeing you at the upcoming public hearings.
All right. Thank you, Public Relations. I'm going to yield now to Commissioner Washington and then to Commissioner Williams for public, for board comments.
Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity, Tommy, to ask you to reach out to Andre so that we can sit down and have a, a talk. But for the record, one of the things that I know that we're anticipating spending a great deal of money for in the very near future, we have a new fire department, an entire fire station that's coming onboard in North Rockdale County. And once we get the fire station up, we still have to, to, to man it, make sure that it has all the equipment. Those are things that we're anticipating in the next couple of this year and probably next year having to fund. Plus, we have to make sure that it's staffed, that all of the firefighters have all of their equipment, all, and, and everything for that particular fire station. So those are some of the things that we know, that's just one thing, that we know that's coming onboard in the next, what, should be 18 months? And one of the things that I'm very proud about this administration is that we have put a lot of resources in fire, which makes our ASO, is that right?
ASO.
ISO. ISO ratings. When we first started, we were at a seven out of 10, and now we're at a three out of 10? The, and the ISO ratings is what helps the countywide insurance rates go down. So the more we invest in things like fire and public safety, the overall savings come to you because your insurance rate should be coming down. My goal, and I know that the chief's goal is to be at a one. We want to have the best fire services in the state of Georgia, and these are ways that we do that.
Commissioner Williams?
So, a couple of things. One, you, Tommy, you asked about the differentiation between the county tax and the school tax. There are two separate line items on your property tax bill. So you'll see what your county tax is, and you'll see what the school board tax is. And of course, in some areas, in some states, counties do have some control over the, with this millage rate for schools. That is not true here. We have no control over the millage rate that they levy and the taxes that they levy for the school board. And just another comment. I, I was reading an article recently that said, "Infrastructure across the nation is crumbling." And what's happening is, people are having to pay for it now because it wasn't maintained properly for the last 40, 50 years. That includes our water, our sewer, our roads, our buildings. You know, when people defer the maintenance and the upkeep on those things, it typically costs more in the end, and so that's kind of the situation we are in right now, where our infrastructure is in desperate need of improvements, and so there's a cost to that too.
Well, you all right, Commissioner?
I am.
Okay.
It didn't collapse.
Okay. Just checking on you. Need you to be with us. Okay.
For a long time.
That was a perfect segue, what the Commissioner was talking about, the challenges that we've had in terms of infrastructure all over Rockdale County. And between the morning presentation of our millage rate and this particular evening presentation, we've been encountered with another situation. And in my office, we call them pop-ups, things that happen throughout the county that are not planned. We have to be in a position to readily respond to at any moment, day, night, or what have you, whether it's an emergency through our sheriff's office, an emergency through fire and rescue, or it's an emergency impacting one of our utilities, stormwater, the water department, or our transportation. This particular response called and required for all hands on deck. The old Millstead community, Commissioners, as you know, was originally founded in 1902. The infrastructure over there is probably just as old as the community. Take a look at the video.
So after receiving a call on my cell phone from a local resident out here in Millstead, all of us know that Millstead is the oldest community in Rockdale County. In fact, this whole community was established in 1902. We've had repeated problems and issues as it relates to water, stormwater, and a lot of infrastructure problems in this community. There's really nobody to take the blame. This community is old. What we have to do for each one of our utilities is continue to monitor this area. Even after we do this repair over here, we've got to continue to monitor because it's so old. On top of that, it's school season. It's back to session. In fact, today is the first day of school, and a school bus has already driven through this road where it is potentially ready for a sinkhole situation. Can you even imagine if kids were on that bus and, and that bus fell into it? The kind of call that I would have gotten from a million of people in Rockdale County. So we've, this can't be patchwork. This is an emergency. I've already directed Director Peak to get the message through to Chief Sanders that we need to fund it and support this to get this fixed, not repaired, fixed. So what I'm asking that EMA do, let's get out a message to all of our first responders and all of our emergency personnel that will be responding, both between the city and the county. Let them know what we have over here. Chief McDaniel, thank you for you and your staff being here to come and put an eye on top of it so you can get the message to your team. I could even, I can't even imagine the money we've invested in a 500,000 apparatus gets stuck in one of these situations. Not to mention, whether we're renting, renting a truck or whether the truck belongs to us, our people are driving the vehicles. But then top it off, the citizen, the citizen. Our job is to take care of the citizens out here all over Rockdale County. Of course, that includes Millstead. So put this high up on your radar. I don't know how much time it's gonna take, but I would at least ask for a minimum of 48 hours to get this whole thing. Because we don't, we may encounter some stuff that we don't know once we go into the ground and see what the real problem is. So I wouldn't certainly say overnight, but crews are on site. It's really the biggest thing that we want to make, make sure we get out. And I'd ask that Public Relations, although the director has a, she immediately posted a, an alert message on, on all of our social media platforms and Channel 23. A part of that message I want her to have out there is that Rockdale Utilities and first responders are aware and on the scene, letting people know that we're, we're out here fixing the problem. So I appreciate y'all responding because I wanted everybody to put their eyes on this. I'm, I'm not gonna be easy until we get this thing, until we get it taken care of because even though we've communicated with the Rockdale County Public Schools and their transportation department with their buses, what if tomorrow there's a substitute bus driver? What if the communication don't get trickled down to the person who drives the bus on this route? And what if they disregard anybody, disregard our barricades? So we need SO, PD, everybody, Meredith, Deputy Director, and Burnham to be made aware of what we have. And I just appreciate you all coming out here and making sure that we put the citizens of Rockdale high on top of the, the chart in terms of getting this rectified. Any, any comments from anybody? Director Peak, this is primarily under your jurisdiction with the support of these other utilities. When you, you've been out here at least a little bit over an hour. In fact, you've quickly responded to the scene. Your assessment, sir, just give me the ABC three of your assessment.
Well, Chairman, we have a couple of things going on over here. One thing, we had a recent water main break over here. We've had several water main breaks on this, on this street right here. In the process of having a water main, you have voids where the water washed the soil away. You have voids. Right now, we have a voided situation, which is causing the street to the bricks.
Underneath the road.
Underneath the road.
Okay.
It's causing the street to the bricks. So what we're going to do today, we're gonna take a saw, and we're gonna just cut this whole area out. We're gonna backfill it to light. This is gonna be a temporary fix. The reason it's gonna be a temporary fix is because we want to fix the long-term problem, which is consequently the water.
Gotcha.
Okay? So we're gonna do a temporary fix. We're gonna fill it in with some crush and run for cars to be able to drive through here.
Okay.
Once we do this temporary fix, we're gonna put a plan together to get a, a new water main installed on this road.
So if I was playing that back in Lehman's turn for the folks who may be watching this broadcast, what I heard you say, you're gonna take care of the emergency part of it. Safety first.
Absolutely.
You're gonna bolster up the roadway underneath with some crush and run. That gives us support and the pressure for the vehicles traveling on the road.
That's right.
That's the immediate short term.
That's the immediate short term.
But for the long term, you're gonna deal with the water main that may be under the road, under the infrastructure that we can't see from the eye, which is really what caused it, which is the culprit of this problem.
The initial cause of this problem. Yes, sir.
Rockdale County, we're here. We've got all hands on deck. It is our goal to make sure that we take care of the citizens of Rockdale County. Myself and the Board of Commissioners have said it time and time again. Public safety is our top priority. Schools open, we're asking that you drive safely as you move through the neighborhoods and watch out for the young people. On top of that, the people in Millstead community, we want to assure you that we're here with Johnny on the spot, and we're gonna make sure that we get this addressed and fixed for the long term, once and for all. I'm Chairman Nesbit, and you're watching Channel 23.
So I want to say thank you to all of our utilities who responded. In fact, they're overworking now in the Millstead community on River Street. These, this is just a, a prime example of what happens day in and day out, even during the overnight hours. When you talk about the aged infrastructure of the county, we have dedicated resources from the federal government and all of what the state Georgia Department of Transportation allocates for Rockdale County. As you heard earlier, you may have heard earlier, they had a presentation from the executive director of the Atlanta Regional Commission was here during our meeting this morning, talking about the cooperation and the collaboration between Rockdale County and the Atlanta Regional Commission. Our goal is to go after as many federal funds or grant dollars that we can help offset the expenditures here in Rockdale County. In addition to that, the more we attract the right type of businesses into our community to help offset and take the burden off of the homeowners in this community, we can fully move down the road in a future capacity with reducing and lowering those taxes. One of those things that we are proud of is the fact that there is no change in what we've done this year versus last year. And Commissioner, you were exactly right. When you requested to bring back up the chart showing the history of the millage rate, there were five consecutive years where it stayed at 20.19. Things have changed. Our community is growing. Some of the, some of the citizens or the constituents, they ask for additional services or service delivery. They ask for more amenities. They often, particularly one of the, the biggest asks most recently is in the area of arts, culture, and entertainment. During the summer months, we, we, we host the summer concert series here out at Coss Rockdale Park. And oftentimes, we hear from so many residents to say, well, why don't we have some of the bigger-name artists like they do over in Stockbridge or some of the other places? There's a cost involved in doing that. So we're working to make sure that infrastructure and public safety remains at the top of the charts. In addition to that, quality of life. But Commissioner Williams, you're also correct. There are three separate entities in our community. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, the Rockdale County Public School System, and of course, the City of Conyers. and of course, the City of Conyers. 82% of your tax dollars go to education and our school system so that we can provide a quality school system for our school, our students in Rockdale County. The Board of Commissioners have no jurisdiction, no authority over the school system. But guess who does? The taxpayers, the citizens. You have the opportunity to speak with your school board elected officials as well as attend their meetings, share and express with them. We're moving in the right direction, and we have another hearing coming up. The date is?
That will be on Tuesday, August 8th at 10:00 a.m.
It's Tuesday, August 8th at 10:00 a.m. We appreciate all of the feedback that we're receiving. Executive Director Religis, there any reason for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Happy August, happy Tuesday. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.